...of allegiance and I'm going to ask Detective Greg Brilliant to lead us, please. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We've got a special deal going that St. Mark's Robotics Team has come to share with us their project and what they're doing. So, we're going to call on Sandra Kretres... How do you pronounce your last name?
Public speak first.
Oh, public speak first?
No.
What are we doing?
Do the presentation.
Okay. All right, let's do roll call first, real quick.
Yeah.
Do the roll call first, and then we'll jump to the robotics team.
Do it right after the roll call.
I got it. Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here. If we could also get a motion to excuse Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Oh, move.
Motion second.
Okay. You call the roll on that for excusing Bright Cruz?
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yeah.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
All right. So, Sandra, if you'd come up and introduce the team and take on the... Your...
Thank you very much for having us here.
Absolutely.
We're very excited. It is our first opportunity for us to present something, what we have been working on for the past six months. And I am going to leave the girls to do all the presentations. So, this is Alicia, Sabrina, and Helen, and they're going to take it from here.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. We are the Building Lines St. Mark's Robotics Team.
You need change? If you need to change or whatever... Are you changing?
I got it.
Okay.
So, we participate in FIRST, which is a robotics competition that focuses mainly on STEM and robotics. And you can participate in it from ages six to ages 18. So, FIRST is a very big sport, although you may not know it. There are half a million children from 86 countries, more than 3,000 events from 70 countries, and more than $80 million scholarship opportunities.
So, FIRST LEGO League Junior is where kids are... They have to find a problem and then they have to create a Lego solution to solve that problem. So, FIRST LEGO League, which is the league that we are in right now, is where we have to find a problem, build a robot to complete a series of missions, and we have to solve the problem that we have found.
FIRST Tech Challenge is from grades seven to grades 12, and it is... They build a metal robot which is slightly bigger than ours and focus on solving a challenge.
FIRST Robotics Competition is for grades nine through 12, and they build a 120-pound road drop between 25 people.
So, as we said, we participate in FLL, FIRST LEGO League. And every year, there's a different theme. This year is all about hydrodynamics, the human water cycle. Next year is fall into orbit, which is all about space. So, as you can see, in the top picture, that is our first year. I was in first grade. And we were doing Food Factor, which is all about food. And on the bottom one, we were in front of the FIU Wall of Wind for another year, which was all about natural disasters. In FIRST LEGO League, we learn how to make an innovative solution and how to strategize, design, build, and program autonomous robots. So, in FIRST LEGO League, there are three parts: the project, the robot game, and the core values. In the project, we have to find a problem related to this year's theme. And we have to find an innovative solution. For robot, we have to make a robot that completes about 18 missions in two minutes and 30 seconds, and we have to program it beforehand. In core values, we learn how to work together as a team.
Project. In order for a project to be valid, it must have a research action, including problem identification, an innovative solution, and a presentation in which we shared with others. So, our solution contains an app that uses crowdsourcing, an analyzer, and a testing strip to test the quality of your water.
So, as you can see, that is our game field. There are 18 missions there, in which we have to make an autonomous robot that completes as many as possible in two minutes and a half. So, as you can see, there's the flow mission, in which you have to push the yellow lever for water to come out. There's a water treatment plant, in which you have to flush the toilet so that compost will come out. In the fountain, you have to drop a big water so that the levels will pop up. And in the bottom one, you can see that there's a pipe that you have to replace with a clean one. So, that is our score sheet, in which referees count how many points we have. And that is our robot. It completes 10 missions. So, our first values are our core values, and they are treating everyone well, friendly sportsmanship, teamwork, learning, community involvement, and making the world a better place. So, Sabrina is the project leader, Alicia is the robot leader, and I am the core values leader. So, for "We are a Team," that is our first core values. And in the pictures, you can see us working together to solve the problem that we are trying to do. The second core value is we do the work to find solutions with guidance from our coaches and mentors. In one of the pictures, we are completing a math problem for our robot to work, and our coach is guiding us through the problems, and we are trying to solve the problem.
Our next core value is we learn together. So, you can see us building our mission models, learning about Flint, Michigan, reading the robot rules, and visiting Miramar's Water Treatment Plant. We honor the spirit of friendly competition is our next core value. So, you can see us competing in a competition in the top photo. Next to that, we're helping three Miami teams. And on the bottom, we're sharing with our classmates and helping us team from St. Bonaventure. Our next core value is what we discover is more important than what we win. So, we went to the Miramar Water Treatment Plant and focused more on learning than actually winning.
We share our experiences with others. As you can see, we were at the Barnes &amp; Noble's Mini Makers Fair, and we were showing people all about our project and about our robot, too. We were also sharing with the Young Women's Preparatory Academy how to present their core values. We were also sharing our project at Publix so people could learn about it. We displayed gracious professionalism and co-pretition. We held a GEMS workshop, which is Girls Exhaling in Math and Science. We taught them a lot about our project and a lot about water. We also taught them how to make a wooden gingerbread light-up house. So, that is our flyer, which we sent out to all the middle school girls, and that is our finished project.
For discovery, we are basically just discovering things about each of the parts of the... of FIRST. And in roba, we learned how to finish what we start. In project, we learned that you can drink water from your toilet. And in core values, we learned that donuts are very messy and should be eaten with hands. For integration, we learned how to combine all of our minds and ideas into one super idea so that we can accomplish what we had to do. And while we were doing this, we learned many useful skills, such as spray painting and drilling.
Inclusion. For inclusion, we played several games coordinated by Helen that allowed us to work on teamwork. Co-pretition. We played fun games that winning wasn't the purpose, and the purpose was actually being a better team. So, here we competed at three competitions: the qualifiers, the regionals, and the states. In the qualifiers, we won best project. In regionals, we won best mechanization. And in states, we won best research. In the regional, we won a bid to Estonia, which we are here to tell you about. There are 18,000 teams in the United States. Only five were chosen to go to Estonia. We are one of them. There are over 100 teams competing from 80 countries, and we really need your help to get there. Okay. So, we're going to show a video?
Slide. You want the other slide? This slide?
No.
No? Okay.
So, we're going to show you a little video.
Beyond your control right now.
We are the Building Lines St. Mark's Robotics Team. We have been invited to compete in the Estonian Open International Robotics Competition this June. There will be over 100 robotics teams from all around the world, and we have been given the opportunity to represent the United States, but we can only do that with your help.
Wait, but where's Estonia?
Estonia is all the way on the other side of the world, right next to Russia.
Oh.
Why is this important? Because future leaders need certain traits, and throughout FIRST LEGO League, we have been learning these traits. Throughout the season, we have learned to work together and solve problems. We have also learned to be gracious, energetic, and to have fun. Even though it is the hardest fun we have ever had, it inspires us and helps us inspire others. FLL helps us become the best we can be. Did you know that 66% of girls in fourth grade claim that they like math and science, but only 18% of female graduates have a degree in these areas? Not many girls have jobs in STEM, and studies have shown that by the age of 15, most girls lose interest in math and science. And the main reason is a lack of female role models. We want to change that. We can all be role models.
I want to be a pharmacologist.
I want to cure spinal injuries.
I would like to be a biomedical engineer for the Army.
Our future can change your life.
Help us get to Estonia.
We are the Building Lines.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Did you all bring any brochures or anything with you that you can possibly put on that back table back there that lets some people that if they want to participate or want to donate or contribute, they can pick up and do that? So, if you can put it on that back table back there, that would be appreciated. So, awesome. What a great opportunity for you all, and exciting event. I mean, that's really, really nice. Anybody got any input here? Dee, you want with me?
I was really impressed. I thought you guys did a really great job. You should be so proud of yourself. I mean, just looking at your faces, you know you are, but you all need to turn and look at Mom's face because she was 10 times more excited. Congratulations, girls.
Eric?
Yeah, I just want to mention, I think you're probably going to go the distance and you're probably going to win, just based on what I'm seeing right here. So, keep up the good work.
Freddie, go ahead.
Just want to congratulate and like to say, I want to keep it good work because you're our future.
Absolutely, our future. So, thank you very much for coming out. We'll talk to everybody and see what we can do for you. Okay? You all are welcome to go. You can stay for the meeting, whatever you'd like to do. But you may be bored through the rest of it, but you're welcome to leave or stay. Your choice is yours. Okay. Welcome to stay. Awesome.
Yeah, their future could be up here.
No question. Evan Jennings. Good. Our state representative from Tallahassee, one of them.
How are you?
Good.
Quick question. How much money are you guys trying to raise? Just out of curiosity, so people know, to get you all to Estonia?
Total the package. How much money do you need?
Okay, so you're close. Let me do you a favor, then, and let's talk afterwards. And I need to know if it's a charitable organization, I take. Then, I'll be able to donate at least a couple thousand dollars to it, if that's all right with you.
Yes.
Awesome.
No, no, no. I mean, and that was a great video, and you guys deserve to go. And the heights that you've already reached, why not go for it all, right? I mean, it makes sense to me, and especially, it seems like you all want to stay in the sciences as a profession. So, let me help you do that.
Thank you.
Cool.
Evan, thank you.
Anyway, sorry. Did you see me run back there and look at the... When you set that down, I ran around the backside to take a look at it real quick. So, I think what we'll do is... Was there a Mr. Roboto level that I saw that was listed there? We'll exchange all our information, and we'll make sure that happens by the end of next week, that you get it, okay?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, it's my pleasure. That was great. Anyway, sorry about that.
That's perfectly all right. We appreciate it.
I was worried they were going to leave. I wanted to make sure that I got that done ahead of time. Anyway, thank you again, as always, so much for inviting me to come here and talk to you about the legislative session. This was a... This was an odd one. They're all independently odd in some way, shape, or form. This one was different than any we've ever had. And essentially, it was a session in three acts, more than anything else. As you know, and we worked on last September, we were struck with the hurricane. And that really... All the focus of the legislature was really pointed in that direction, leading through our committee weeks as we got started. As that happened, there was a select committee that was put together in the House. They issued a document with over 100 pages of suggestions that could be made. I would say in the single digits in terms of percentile of what was actually accomplished. So, there's still a lot more work to do on hurricanes and hurricane preparedness and hardening and everything else that goes along with it. That was one of the things I was genuinely concerned about, that we would kind of go, hey, let's... We'll make sure that nursing homes have backup generators, and we'll just kind of walk away and say that we're done here. They did a little bit more work than that, or we did. I am part of that body, and so I have to take some responsibility. But we did not see the full fruition of things that I think we would have hoped for and the lessons that every community had learned during the hurricane season last year. After that, unfortunately, the legislature, especially on the Senate side, really became paralyzed due to some of the Me Too and sexual harassment issues that had taken place. Several key individuals in the Senate had to step down. There were multiple scandals that were going on simultaneously, to the point that there was even a few days where the Senate should have been meeting in regular committee and just canceled everything altogether. It literally crippled. And when you're talking about only having 60 days in Tallahassee, when you take two or three of those days away, it's a lot bigger of a deal than at first glance. Luckily, session broke out of that slump, and we started working more as a body, as two co-equal bodies, as we always should. But unfortunately, and excuse me, that's not even a strong enough word, the insidious act that occurred in Parkland on Valentine's Day of this year happened, and session really came to a complete halt at that point. There were only about three weeks left, and it changed the tenor, the tone, and the direction of the entire legislative bodies. What we saw there, a bill was put forward, and I bring this up specifically so we can talk about the budget, if there's any budgetary questions. And because of the bill that came out of that tragedy, almost half a billion dollars was needed to pay for what was in that bill. That was the money assigned to it. The first place they started to look were single line item member projects, and that's where you started to see cutting take place. So, unfortunately, I know we had some stuff. Some stuff drifted away. I know we did get some money down anyway, but know that this was due to a horrific circumstance, more than anything else, and looking forward to getting back up there. God forbid, we don't have anything like that again, any kind of tragedy reaching to that level that happens ever. But with any luck, we'll get through this hurricane season. Knock on wood, if I had any in front of me. And we'll do our best and continue to communicate with you, the body, your staffers. I know, I think I've had in-depth conversations with just about everybody up here about one thing or another, and look forward to continue serving the town of Southwest Ranches and keeping that going. And you have wonderful representation up there. They are constantly in my office. I will not lie to you about that. Can I get you for one minute, just one minute, representative? But they are on it, and they work extremely hard. And you went with an impressive firm, and they are working. At the very least, I can tell you, they are working impressively in Tallahassee. So, with that said, more than anything, you know, when I come here, I like to present myself for any questions and answer anything I possibly can about Tallahassee, either this last session or in the upcoming session, anything that needs to be on my radar moving forward so that we can be best prepared to serve the town.
Thank you, Evan. You do a great job for us. We greatly appreciate it. Thanks for all you do for us. I would tell you, first and foremost, one of our big concerns is the de-annexation attempt may come up again relating to Pembroke Pines.
And we are... That is something that was already on my radar. I can promise you that.
So, I just wanted to make sure I brought it up and bring it up, and we all keep it on our radar.
Yes. And I think, you know, given that the incoming chair also represents this particular area, I think we should be okay on that front.
Okay. Awesome. Greatly appreciated. Anybody got any questions?
Yeah, not really a question, just a comment. I just want to thank you for what you guys did last legislative session. It's really going to make a difference in some of our areas with the drainage projects that are coming online, that was opportunities that were passed over decades ago, and the residents have actually been suffering for it.
Absolutely.
And now, we're... It's actually going to be a real fix.
Yes. And that's one of the things that I'm excited about was... Because I'll be honest with you, not every city that I represent got money this year. It is just one of those things that happens. And, you know, it was a good team effort, and, you know, luckily, we were able to bring something home. And all credit is due to, as well, I want to make sure, even though I know I was here several weeks prior. But Representative Stark worked really hard on that as well, I know, because I saw it firsthand.
It's going to really make a difference. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
Good. It's our duty. It's not even our pleasure. It is our pleasure, but it's our duty if we're going to...
Freddie, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to personally thank you for the representation. You're doing a terrific job.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate it.
Dee, go ahead.
I also want to thank you. It was great up there. I do have a request. I hope the next time I get up there, you can warm the air a little bit more. I mean, it's just so cold.
If you go up next session, remember, I can promise you that it will be. I can make a guarantee. But that's only because we'll be starting in March rather than January.
Okay.
So, I can promise you, you will not have to deal with freezing temperatures like you did the last time.
And again, thank you for all your efforts, your hard work. What we get is always appreciated. I would like to piggyback on what the mayor said as far as that de-annexation. I think that's on all our radars, everyone sitting in this room, you know.
Understandably.
Yeah.
Understandably.
So, again, thank you, and thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. And you all know, and staff knows, anything I can do, my office is always open to you, whatever we can do to help.
Just warm it up. Just get it a little warmer up there.
I will do my best, and Mother Nature is going to give me a helping hand this next year.
And vice versa. Just because we come up there during Broward Days or whatever, if you need a special trip, or you need us for a reason, and you need us to come, just make a phone call. We'll be there.
We'll let you know.
Yeah, Andy wanted to step in.
Yes, sir.
Just Representative Jenny. First of all, I want to thank you for being here tonight and for your support. I know that we're a little unusual and not like anywhere else, and I know that you have a good understanding of our town, and we appreciate that.
And I appreciate the uniqueness and the opportunities that gives me to represent a community that is quite different than some of the other communities I represent, and that's a good thing. Anything that speaks to diversity in any way, which shape, or form, I enjoy it myself. So, it's a pleasure to represent the town of Southwest Ranches.
Thank you for that. And I would be remiss if I didn't, on behalf of our finance director and the rest of the town, award you a Marty Sherwood Gold Star for your assistance on the PPDR.
Okay, all right. I was not aware of such honors, but I'll take them when they come to me. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Evan. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'm going to be quiet when I speak to these...
Help yourself. So... No problem. All right. It's Southern Strategies here. They're not here yet?
No.
Okay. Davie Police Chief Keith Dunn. How are you, sir?
I'm doing well.
Awesome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Mr. Burns, Keith Dunn, Police Chief. I'm here today because I'm fairly excited, but I'm also saddened. As you all are aware, Greg Brilliant, the detective that's been assigned to Southwest Ranches since the start of the contract, is getting ready to finally retire after over 41 years of law enforcement. Obviously, with 41 years, Greg has learned a few things in his trade, and he's well-respected throughout the community of law enforcement, and I understand that he's well-respected here in the town of Southwest Ranches. So, we're saddened to see Greg go, but we do realize that something has to happen after 41 years. Greg would like to go and sit on his porch and drink his whiskey and not have to worry about being called out. So, with that comes to a new chapter with our relationship. And we're going to assign, which I'm sure most of you have already met, he's been out here kind of learning, because the first thing we wanted to do is when there's going to be a transfer, is to make sure there was not any loss of the knowledge and the job that Greg does, because I do realize that Greg is much more than a detective out here. I kind of look at him as my little police liaison. Well, not quite little, he's huge. But Greg is one of those guys that I depend on. He calls me regularly, and he also does some detective work out here. Thank God, you don't need it very much. But we're bringing on Detective Paul Williams, and I'm sure most of you, at least in the city staff, have met Paul, but I don't think a lot of the community has. And I'd like to let you know what you're getting. Detective Williams has been a police officer with the town of Davie since December of 1995. During his career, he's participated in a variety of units within the department: road patrol, field training, special operations, SWAT, narcotics, and now investigations. Of most recent, Detective Williams has been assigned to investigations in a homicide unit where he's worked for several years. He also does a lot of our cold cases. He's extremely knowledgeable in this particular area. He's also won many awards for his work and dedication to duty. In 2016, he was named Officer of the Year. In 2017, he received the Distinguished Chiefs Award. And I must say that the Distinguished Chiefs Award this year, I did steal an idea from Southwest Ranches. When I came to the Christmas party and I saw the Andy Burns pictures come up, I said, you know, I've got to do that. So, that's what they got for the Distinguished Chiefs Award, was a picture of my mug. So... And I don't know whether Greg has his, I mean, Paul has his in his office, or whether he's going to be wearing it around here. Okay. So, I'm glad to see that he's got that. He also received a nice award, but I'm sure that the face picture is the one that's valued. I know that I have Andys on my desk, so... He's also received several accommodations from residents and his peers. Detective Williams is also an adjunct professor at the Broward County Police Academy, where he teaches investigations. So, I wanted to formally come over and introduce you to Detective Williams. Detective Williams, can you come up?
Thank you, Chief. I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity that I have here to work with you guys. I look forward to working with the council, the staff, as well as the residents in Southwest Ranches, and to continue the path that Greg Brilliant has kind of paved, to make sure there's a smooth transition. You are, continue to be happy with the service the Davie Police Department provides you. So, I'm here.
Awesome.
24/7 for you guys, so thank you. Appreciate it.
We welcome you aboard. Greatly appreciated. I think we want to go down and get a picture with him. Can we do that?
I think that would be great. And I just want to take a moment and assure you all...
I'd like Greg, I'd like all three of them in, if we could.
I do want to thank the chief for being here tonight, and we've had an opportunity to work with Paul going forward. And I know some of you have met him in some community meetings and some other things. You haven't had perhaps the same opportunity the staff has had in Iraq, but he's been a great fed. I think Davie PD's made a good choice, and we look forward to rolling forward with Paul sitting in that chair. So, thank you, chief.
Awesome. Let's go down and get a picture.
Give it down, Brad. We'll hold you to a non-speaking part tonight.
So, Andy, you realized I stole that idea, huh?
I like it. Well, I saw the picture back there. I had to turn it over, Keith. I had to turn it over. I saw it. Thank you. Oh, he'll be over here if you can find him for a little while.
Nope.
Not going to make it? Okay. Boy Scout. Who am I passing that to? You're going to take it?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mayor, yeah, actually, we have one of our scouts with us tonight, Grant Wilkinson.
Okay.
Grant completed his Eagle Scout project last August over at Colusa Corners. He and his team teamed up with the Parks Foundation and they purchased and installed the picnic pavilion table and the trash receptacle, completing the site furnishing on the town's project and saving us the need and the expense in doing so. And he has some remaining funds in his account that he would like to donate to the town. So if it's okay with you, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Grant.
Floor's yours. You can pull that mic up a little bit if you like. There you go.
Awesome. Thank you. My name is Grant Wilkinson. I'm, what's it called? Eagle Scout from Troop 224, Southwest Ranches area, and I wanted to thank you all for helping me with my project to go ahead and provide the furnishings for the park and construct it with my troop. And I have a check here for you, Mayor.
Awesome.
The remaining funds of $550.
$550. Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. Unfortunately, I'll say, should we go down and get a picture for this? Let's go down and get a picture for this, and then I'm going to give this check over to Marty.
There you go. Hold that check up. Alright, big smiles. Thanks, sir. Awesome. Tom Russell says he's missing the debut of his time clock. We had that thing on the tripod before, remember, and you had to reset the numbers. It was a pain in the ass. This works a lot, though. Yep, that's the only one we have.
Thanks again, robotics team. Greatly appreciated. Thanks for coming out. And make sure you, after Estonia, you come back and give us an update. Okay? Awesome. Alright. Second, we're going to vacation right away. A public comment we're going to go to? Okay.
So we have one speaker tonight. It's David Kozinski.
Good evening, council, mayor. Just a quick little word that, it was announced in the paper today that Senators Bill Nelson and Marco Rubio jointly introduced proposed federal legislation that is to be titled the Sober Home Fraud Detection Act, which is going to, from the federal level, start putting regulations on the unscrupulous sober homes. They're looking for high levels of recidivism, lengthy patient stays, and the locations where some of these residents are located to further crack down on these unscrupulous practices. And, you know, we've had that problem of them popping up in our town, and I think this will also help the town. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks for the info.
Any additional public comment?
Seeing no additional public comment. Public comment is closed. Back to us.
Board.
Board, board comments? Do we have board comments? Bob? Okay? No? No board comments?
Outside.
Okay. Seeing no board comments?
Public, council comments?
Yep. Council, I mean, who's up? Dee, go ahead.
I'll take off first. First, I'd like to express my deepest sympathy to a longtime resident out here, the Summerlin family. The loss that they're going through right now is absolutely horrendous and it's a loss to us too. So, you know, I'd like to ask you for a moment of silence. I don't know if we, did we recognize that at the last meeting? Did you say anything?
No, I didn't.
So.
Ray Summerlin.
Ray Summerlin. So we have lost somebody very dear to all our hearts. So if we could just take a moment, please. Second, good evening, everyone. I'm glad everybody could come out and join us. This is what our town is all about by having our residents here. And I'm going to have to put my glasses on because I can't see no more. I attended the MPO meeting this morning and to let you all know that Broward County is doing a, a lot of good things, a lot of good infrastructure, road repairs, building bridges, whatever. Most of it of what they're doing is going to make our comings and our goings faster, easier, and much safer. There are a few items, you know, that I had mentioned to our town administrator. He's going to be looking into them. And as soon as he gets all his information, I'm sure he'll get back with us as, as quickly as he possibly can. Oh, okay. This Saturday, Town of Davie, May 12th, from 12 to 2, we have Pioneer Day.
I thought it was 10. 10 or 12?
May 12th.
Well, I know, but I thought it started at 10.
It says 12 to 2.
Oh, okay.
Davie Town Hall. We will be recognizing one of our pioneers, Mr. Noel Hollingsworth, and I would encourage everybody to come out and attend. It's, it's quite an honor. It's a, it's a really nice little event and I hope to see most of yous there. And I believe that's it for me.
Okay.
Yep.
Ready?
You know, I just want to bring some up. It's actually my church, but actually St. Mark's Church is the only school we have in our town that is actually within the boundaries of our town. The rest are Davie and all of them, but they are the only school that we really have.
Well, Archbishop too, I think.
Yeah, we have Archbishop McCarthy.
Saint Marks and Archbishop McCarthy.
Yeah. It's all part of the same church.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yeah. Just want to thank Ken. He, I don't know if he's still here, but he spends a lot of time and I think he does a terrific job representing us up in Tallahassee. And again, I want to thank Paul. I don't know if he's still here. He's a personal friend of mine.
He's out front.
And I know, I know how hard he works because I see him a lot and I know his family and everything. That's it.
Okay. Gary, you're up to bat.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Just to be brief, a couple announcements. Nothing too dramatic on the front burner here. Before you go to the Pioneer Days, you can go to Hazmat at Waste Pro from 8 to 2 p.m. It's at 17302 Pines Boulevard. There, there's no shredding, but you can take old tires, batteries, TVs, things of that nature. Just have to show your ID. It's one of our six Hazmat drop-offs that we have per year. We will still have the four at the barn. This is just one at their facility that's open to us at this time. And just want to mention that the Parks Foundation has Bingo at the barn on the 19th from 6 to 9 p.m. I don't think it's sold out. Yeah, it is it? No. Okay. So I urge you to come. It was a lot of fun the last time we did it. Everybody enjoyed it. And the food was pretty good, I heard too. So we'll go from there. Anyway, but just want to tell, wish everybody, thank you for coming and have a great night.
Awesome. Sounds good. Yeah. Went to Bingo, going to Bingo again. Should be a great event. So those of you that haven't gotten your tickets, call Town Hall or there are quite a few people around town that also have them. So get your tickets and come on out. It's a great, a great time and a great event. So anyhow, I'm going to let Legal go next. Hold on. Richard's filling in for Keith.
That is the legal comment. Thank you.
That was it. One line.
Yeah, that's it. Oh, Andy?
Yeah, I, really just two things, Mayor. One is, you all met our, our new police detective, Paul Williams, earlier. You also heard Councilmember Schroeder lead a moment of silence for, for Ralph Summerlin. Just to tie it all together, the Summerlins are Paul's grandparents. So for a guy who's our new detective in town, he, he certainly knows this town. He's spent a lot of time here. He knows people here. Council, or Vice Mayor Fisickelli had mentioned that he's known him for a long time. I mean, he's, he's, he's been a part of our community even before he got assigned here. So just to reinforce what, what a good addition that's going to be for all of us. And the second thing is, I just want to dovetail on Councilmember Jablonski was talking about the household hazardous waste. We've been doing those for a long time. We've been doing them four times a year at the barn. We know that people are well-trained to go to the barn. So, so this weekend, should they go to the barn, they'll be greeted by some signs to tell them to go over to the, the Waste Pro facility over in Pembroke Pines. This is not, not meant as an inconvenience to our residents who have been trained to go to, to Rollin Oaks, to the barn. Those, those four annual events will still be held at the barn. We're actually increasing service by adding two additional events per year over at the Waste Pro facility. And so I just wanted to share that and that's really all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. I guess, Russell, you're up for number 11, ordinance, second reading.
Yes, Mayor, this is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida vacating, closing, and abandoning a portion of unimproved right-of-way recorded as the west 20 feet of tracks 13 through 16, less the south 40th, south 40th feet of track 16 Everglades Sugar and Land Company subdivision of section 34, Township 50 South, Range 40 East, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book one, page 152 of the public records of Davie County, Florida, generally located at the 13800 block of Sterling Road midway between Hancock Road and Holatay Trail and extending 1,280.75 feet north of Sterling Road, authorizing the preparation and execution of effectuating documents, providing instructions to the town clerk, providing for recordation, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This was approved on first reading at the last meeting on April 26, 2018.
Okay. Can we get a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Any public comment on this matter?
New light system, just to give you a heads up.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th. What we have is what I'm going to say again. I think the corners of these properties, if we do a 45-degree cut, then we can put the trail and then make the left turn, make like this if they want to. But if we don't, the corners are going to come together and it's going to be blocked forever. If we get a left and a right person that are kind of cornered to each other, that request, as this property owner is doing, for the abdication of the right-of-way of that area. Put a 45-degree cut on, on the corners so we can have it, the trail to continue if it's going to be. I know it was supposed to be talked about at Parks this last meeting, but I understand it got sort of confused and they put it off. But we've got this happening now. So let's put a 45-degree cut on the corner, the north corner of that property, the northwest corner, and let it go forward at that. If you want to give it back later because it's not going to happen ever, then, but I think interior trails are definitely necessary to try and keep the animals off the road where someone comes along and hits the animal. Okay, thank you.
Any additional public comment?
David Kozinski, 6411 Holatay Trail, echoing Noel on the horse trail. I'd like to have, like to see part of this sector set off for a horse trail. I think that would be a beautiful thing after the homes are built that our residents can ride horses through that area. Think it'd be supporting our rural nature of our town.
Okay, we did not discuss it at the Parks Board because what we need is, we needed a layout of it so that everybody who really doesn't understand it would understand it. I think at the last meeting, when you voted for this, I said that I had no objection because, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but neither side is dedicated at this point, correct? In other words, is that not 20 feet?
Jeff, hold on. I'm going to let Jeff answer that question. Go ahead.
I want to understand your question first, Ken.
Okay, the property that you're going to release is 20 feet, but it's a 40-foot opening span.
Correct.
You know.
We have the 20 feet on the other side.
So we still have the 20 on the other side at this point?
Correct. And we have 40, the full 40 immediately, immediately north.
Right. And that's one reason why I was in a panic at this point. But should one of those owners decide they want to take the opposite side, then we'll have to make that adjustment so that you can connect. Otherwise, you won't be able to.
You're right, but it's got to be done at a property. We already have it back and forth and there's a section or two we're missing, I think, along the way.
Right.
But it's not going to be related to this property because we could already go past that property.
Right. Right now.
So that's the point.
Yeah, right now. So at the next meeting, we're going to discuss.
Knowing what we know, we wouldn't give it up at this point because we already vacated the other side.
Right.
Or either that or we don't have it.
Yeah. We have several properties. We really need to sit down and address the properties that have these type of easements or dedications and use them for multipurpose trails.
Listen, I, I couldn't agree more, but we also have that money to build them.
Well.
Or make them or open them or make them usable.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Bob Hartman, 5441, Southwest 198 Terrace. I would encourage you to keep as much of this quote "trail space" or easements as possible. So over at my friend John's house, he lives near the Boy Scout camp over in Davie. One of these runs right past behind his house. Nobody really rides horses on them anymore, which they could because it's open. People walk. They take their kids for walks through there. The kids ride through on their bicycles. You know, it's, it's really a multipurpose trail behind his house. It's not really a horse trail. And to me, that, that creates community when people can go out, you know, as the sun's going down, walk on these trails and, and enjoy. So I would, you know, if you got to give up half for whatever the reason, always keep the other half.
I'm disagreeing with you.
Keep the options open on, you know, cutting back and forth so that we don't lose, you know, the town doesn't lose its rights. Thank you.
Hold on. Any more public comment? Seeing no additional public comment. Public comment is closed. Do we have a motion in a second already?
Yeah.
We do. Yeah, go ahead, Freddie.
I'm going to talk on it because I'm very familiar with the piece of property. This piece of property is completely closed by fence. There's no trail going through this property unless we're going to pay to have a fence put in on the property. I think it should be noted that if we're going to spend a lot of time on it, I think we're just wasting time because it's completely fenced.
Okay. Any additional comments?
Yeah, just, I just want to say what, what, the item that Noel brought up initially about the 45, I think that's a definite consideration for the future. I don't know if it applies to this prop. I don't think it applies, let me rephrase that, to this property because we have 20 feet on, on the other side of it.
I agree.
So, but I think we should consider that on any future criteria, you know, for prop.
Yeah, listen, Jeff, if you can make a note of that to keep an eye on that kind of stuff moving forward to, for interconnects. moving forward to, for interconnects or cross-connects or whatever, and where we need that, just let us know.
Absolutely. And again, any of these requests in the future have to come before you, so we're all going to know about it. I look forward to seeing what Gazeboard comes up with, and I just want to also reiterate that we do have 40 feet almost all the way from Sterling to Palomino. There's really only about a 330-foot section, about an eighth of a mile north of this property, where it narrows down to 20, and then at the very end, the Calabrese property, where the town vacated the 20 feet. But we have 40 feet the rest of the way. And since the town's first incorporated, this is only the second request we have to vacate anything in here. So, in the future, if we get another one, we don't have a plan yet, we'll take these considerations into account.
Well, I think the other problem is, this particular right-of-way was not on the trails, the Parks Board radar. Yeah. So, I think moving forward with the GSI program that we have now, we should make a layer of what right-of-ways we have or don't have so we can make those calls and decisions. So, I'm going to just let Andy a heads up on getting data in, put it into that system we have. Okay. Other than that, I'm good. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. I think, are we tabling the next one?
Yeah, but I believe we have to read the item, and then we can take the motion to table it.
All right. Read number 12, if you would, please.
This is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Southwest Ranches by amending Article 3, Chapter 22 of the Code entitled Cable Television, amending Section 22-88 of the Code by providing that a certificate holder, as defined in Section 610103 Subsection 14, Florida statute, shall comply with the Town of Southwest Ranches Communications Rights of Way ordinance, Article 2, Chapter 22, Sections 22.18 through 22.31 of the Town Code for placing and/or maintaining a cable system or facilities in the town public rights of way, repealing and replacing Article 2, Chapter 22, Sections 22.19 through 22.31, entitled Placement of Facilities and Rights of Way, with new Sections 22.18 through 22.27, and creating the Town of Southwest Ranches Communications Rights of Way ordinance, providing intent and purpose, applicability and authority to implement, providing definitions, providing for registration for placing or maintaining communications facilities in the public rights of way, providing requirement of a permit, providing application requirements and review procedures, providing for a performance bond, providing for construction methods, providing development and objective design standards, providing for fees and taxes, providing enforcement remedies, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for repeal of zoning in progress, and providing an effective date. This item is also approved on first reading April 26, 2018.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may.
Go ahead.
This passed on first reading two weeks ago by a 5-0 vote. If you recall, our consultant, Gary Resnick, was here. He's heard from some of the telecommunications companies who have sent some, they actually asked for the delay so that they could further review this and discuss any concerns that they might have with him. We're not proposing any changes to the ordinance as you passed it on first reading at this point, but we wanted to allow him time to complete that review, and we'd like to bring this back before you again on the 24th. So, we respectfully ask the Council to table this item until the meeting of May 24th.
Okay. So, I need a motion to table this till May 24th.
Show move.
Second.
Want to call the roll?
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion to table passes.
All right. Question for you, Andy. Any updates or anything new on the fire truck issue?
The Chief, who was here earlier in...
He's outside. Keith, can we borrow you?
What I have requested from the Chief is an extensive timeline of exactly what repairs he's tried to make and what, I'll say frustrations he's run into with the vendors. He is in the process of completing that. I think, Lee, you're 80, 90% on that.
Yes, we are.
So, as soon as we have that from Lee, we will forward that over to Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Poliakoff, so that they can review it and reach out to Council for Rosenbauer.
Okay. Did Carlos get ahold of you today to get you the information?
He did not, and I spoke to Lee earlier today to reiterate the information we're looking for on what may or may not be available.
Okay.
And I did speak to Carlos, and he's going to go ahead and get up me all the data for it, and I'll forward it to Andy.
Okay. I just don't want that ball to get dropped. It's a hot item.
Mayor, it's on our daily radar.
Okay. Anyhow, because that would be an amazing opportunity for us.
Potentially, certainly, yes.
So, anyhow, okay. So, by, definitely by next, before next meeting, next week sometime, I'm guessing, we'll have this together and that letter out. Okay. All right. Minutes, approval of minutes, please. Let's see. I don't need a motion for that, I don't think, do I?
I make a motion to approve both meeting minutes.
Okay. Any corrections to our minutes? Because it's been happened before and more than once.
Well, we have two.
Any correction?
For March and April.
All right. The motion was for two.
Okay.
Okay. Seeing no corrections, call the question.
Mayor, who made the second? I'm sorry, I didn't catch who made the second.
Freddie made it.
Freddie?